Good evening, my name is Jennifer Preble and I'm the Saco School Board Chair. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:00 PM on this Wednesday, August 13th. Please note, we have all school board members in attendance with the exception of school board member Johnson, who is excused this evening. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of its citizens, one nation under God, in the physical, political, and justice for all. All right, moving on to item three of our agenda this evening. I have approval of school board meeting minutes dated July 9th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Chair Preble?
School Board Member Truman?
I move we approve the school board meeting minutes dated July 9th, 2025.
All right, I have a motion by school board-
Second.
And a second by Jeff, school board member Richards. All right. Any discussion on the meeting minutes dated July 9th, 2025? All right. Roll call vote. School Board Member Warnoff?
Yes.
School Board Member Richards?
Yes.
I vote yes. School Board Member Roach?
Yes.
School Board Member Kidder?
Abstain.
And School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes five yes, one abstention. Moving on to item four, adjustments to the agenda. I do not see any adjustments that were brought to my attention this evening. So we can move on to item five, which is correspondence. I was not had any correspondence brought to my attention. So we can move on to item six, which is public session. Please feel free to come before the board and speak your name and address for the record, and you would have three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody is seeking recognition for public session, we can move on to item seven, which is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Ray?
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out on such a wonderful night. I know there's no place you'd rather be right now than here. But just a few updates about the summertime. So first and foremost, this is for the board and community. Another exciting milestone in our building project today. We received final design approval by the State Board of Education this afternoon. And so following that approval, we have a target date of August 20th or 21st to place the ad for bid. We are hoping that on August 28th, there will be a kind of pre-bid construction walkthrough where people will come to ask questions. We'll take all of the pre-qualified bidders out to the site, walk them through that, and tentatively, right now, we are aiming for October 8th to be the bid opening day. We're kind of going back on a couple of dates, and I really wanted to have it on a school committee day so that we could talk about it that night. Things are progressing very nicely on that, and we received unanimous support from the State Board of Education to go to the next step. So we are another milestone, exciting day for us. Just wanted to mention, we will talk about busing. So one of the things that is really, really important, if you're watching at home, and we will send out a reminder, is that if you've changed addresses, you've changed daycare, you've done anything with your afternoon schedule that our schools or transportation office should know, please do that now. It's very, very difficult for them on the first day of school to make all of those changes for kiddos, so we appreciate it if you can reach out and do that now. Teachers are back the 21st, 25th, and 26th, and then we'll have our students with us on the 27th. One of the things that we're paying attention to right now and in contact with the city, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to send out a communication sometime early next week, as I just, as I drive through the construction by the turnpike, I worry a little bit about what that may look like, not only for bus and car traffic, but nothing tells me that's the best walking to school situation either right now. So if parents are watching this, and your kids take a bike, or they're taking them their electric bike, or they're walking to school, let's see how the next couple of weeks develops. We may have to make some temporary changes for things, and I just, I'm not loving how we drive through that situation right now and see. It seems like that could be very challenging for us on day one, which also means, on the other hand, when people say, "Oh, it's a challenge, maybe I'll drive my child to school," that also could make it much worse for us in the afternoon time as we have our elementary kids or buses arriving late at the middle school to pick kids up. So we're watching that piece. From a hiring standpoint, we are in really, really good shape right now. At least the other day, I think Jess, you said you were down to three or four openings, five? So five ed tech openings? We haven't been that low ever. So that's a real positive thing for us with the hiring piece. And then finally, I'm going to ask Dawn to come up, and Andrew's with him. And I, and I look forward to having, when we meet with the council coming up, having a greater discussion. But it's been, we're not quite a year, are we, Dawn?
No, September will be a year.
September will be a year when we've started a collaboration with the city. And I just want everybody to clearly know my stance is that this is going extremely well. I couldn't be more pleased. And the work that Dawn and Andrew are doing on the school side is not only just appreciated by me and the clarity in their on top things, but hearing from the principals and staff, how things are happening is great. And so sometimes we do some things that go well, sometimes we don't. Let me tell you, this is a great collaboration, and I'm so happy that we're doing it. And Dawn wanted to kind of update you on some of the summer projects that are going on. So Dawn?
I just wanted to take a couple of minutes, kind of give everybody a quick idea of what we've already done, what we're working on right now, and what's coming up, because when you put it all down, there's, there's quite a bit of work that we've completed already. Remember, a lot of these are not just for looks, it's safety, it's, again, we have a beautiful new school that we're going to be building, but we've still got another few years to take care of the ones we have, to make sure that the students are safe and our buildings are safe and everything. So we, Andrew worked on this list this afternoon. We've been out stripping floors ourselves, we've been out putting sheetrock on walls, we've been doing all that stuff all week, trying to get down to final details. So I'm going to just do a quick rundown for you. If you've got any questions after, please feel free, and I'll give you my best hint on it. Fairfield School, we had a lot of sprinkler deficiencies that we updated this year and have taken care of, and everything is back 100% again. We had to do some wall reconfigurations for some special students that we didn't know about at the beginning of the season, we took care of. Young School, we've done the same thing with our sprinkler system, all of our deficiencies that were listed through our contractor and with the state, we've taken care of and got those all taken care of. We had nine rooms that had carpet that was just beyond going one more year. So we had nine of them that we took care of, which you know in Same as a House, it means stripping everything out of the room, stripping the carpet, making sure everything is good underneath, taking care of it, which we, we have all of those nine all done. Probably some of the more important things, Burn School, we had a circulator pump that was one of our VFDs that we just had changed last week. We have two pumps in that school, we've only had one pump for two years. So that one pump has been doing the work of two for the last two years, and I was getting a little nervous, we weren't going to make that. So we actually got that taken care of. One of the bigger ones we had at middle school, back behind the library, we had a roof leak that every heavy storm, we had water coming through the roof. Ceiling tiles had been changed 10, 20, 30 times, I don't know how many. We hired a contractor to come in, we lifted up the unit on the roof, found out that it had been installed improperly in the first place. The drains were on the backside instead of the front side. We have had two rainstorms since we did the, haven't had a lot of rain lately, but we've had two rainstorms, both of them are dry. We put new ceiling tiles in, everything is dry, insulation's dry, hopefully we got it this time. The roof fascia, we've had replaced, it's been in sections the last three to four years, and they weren't installed properly, so the last windstorm we had tore them off, we had those screwed down, tightened up, and all new done this year, not only for the looks, but to stop the water and also for safety. If anybody was outside and one of those 10-foot pieces of fascia came off, it's liable to hurt somebody. Boiler repair, as you know, that unit, those units up there aren't that old, yet we've had the middle unit, the second one, that we've had troubles with. We had a new boiler and oil pump put in that already this summer, so it's all prepped and ready to go for the winter. We're going to keep a close eye on that and make sure that we don't have any problems. Part of a real quick explanation on that, we had a few costs come in on our heating system that we found out we had too much power going to the building. We had enough that we had to get CMP involved. They went all the way back to their main substation, didn't find it coming up anywhere until it got to the school. We had CMP come up, we took the transformer apart, which is originally with the school, found out we were feeding way too much power into the school, which caused us to burn some of our heat pump motors out, some of our other pumps that took care of our VFDs and all of our units on the roof. We shut the school down one night, had that taken care of. We had our electrical inspector and electrician up there. CMP came and turned it down. We're running proper amounts of power now to it, and hopefully that was one of the problems, why we had that issue with that boiler to begin with. The generator that's been a two-year project is complete, it's online. I get an email every Sunday at 2:00 that tells me it's running, and it shuts off 15 minutes later, it's on a cycle. We've had the transfer switch installed, everything is all set up there. We have 200 gallons of fuel in it, we will be filling that up pretty soon before winter, but we'll wait until the anti-jell gets in it to take care of it. But that school is 100% generated now, so it will run 100% everything in there, heat to water to you name it, will be in there. Cafeteria, borrowed lights, painting was finally finished up this year. We got all of the window finishes on it, and it's completed, looks nice up there, it's a kind of a nice look for sitting in the cafeteria. Middle School has two giant fans on the ceiling, both of them were not working, one was burned out and had been removed at some point, don't know why, but we had both of those changed. The gym has kind of got a pretty good facelift, it has been completely painted, we changed the colors over to the school colors, it's got a light blue, a gray, and a white on the walls. We are in the process of the floor being finished right now as well, we've stripped it down, it's the first time that floor has ever been stripped since it was installed. Had a bunch of people involved in the layout of it, it's going to blend in really nice, they started painting the floor today. It's been completely stripped down, two coats of sealer, it'll have all the paint with the Saco logo and everything on the floor is written down. We have three pickleball courts, two volleyball courts, and the main basketball courts, plus the practice areas on the basketball, and those are all recessed below. So no more tape on the floor, this is all in the floor permanently until we decide to finish it somewhere down the road again. Classrooms up there, we didn't have a whole lot of carpet left, there was 11 classrooms that still had carpet in it, we removed those this year, everything is VCT, everything has been rewaxed, we have put everything in, we used two coats of sealer. We did a little bit of checking with the custodians this year. On all of our floor finishes, typically you would do what the package calls for. I've done this for years, we always put five to 10 coats of wax on the floor, the last few years, they've been doing three to four. We did seven to eight on the entire school pretty much all through, so we've got a really nice base coat. Hopefully it'll hold up a little bit more so we can keep the floors cleaner through the off-season, and possibly recoat somewhere around Christmas if we need to, to keep it up a little bit more. The hallway floor is a whole different type of flooring system, we don't really, we didn't really want to, we didn't have time to get into that this year, but we did have them repaired, so all of the tears, rips, and everything else have all been repaired, glued back down, it's getting fresh wax on it now and will be done. The backside of the building had a lot of demo back there that had just been kind of thrown out back, we've cleaned it all down, carried all the brush away, cleaned up around the greenhouse, gotten that all taken care of. Pre-K came to us, we met with the owner of the building, very nice gentleman, allowed us to put in a wall and a door just for one of our special students that we could take care of, and that's already done and been all completed. We have a bunch of projects that are going on right now that will be done soon, they're putting in a new dry sprinkler valve. The valve at Burn School was a 1952 valve, it no longer has parts available for it, so we were one test away from not having a sprinkler system. We did get, they are changing that today and tomorrow, and that will be completed and will be 100% tested. The condensate tank, which is a special job, we've already signed the contract on that, they'll be doing that sometime in September, it's a special order for the heating system. That'll be all changed, as well as one of our boilers that had a pretty bad leak in it. So we should have both units back running for the winter with the condensate tank in check, along with a new pump. I'm hoping that we can control the heat over at Burns a little bit better. Andrew's getting really good at testing thermostats with our air-controlled, we bought our own tester so that we can do it ourselves and save a little money in time, and be in there when we can be there. We also have a new door going on the backside of Burn School because the door is so rotten it doesn't shut anymore, and security is kind of one of those big deals, I like to make sure the building can be secure, so that'll be installed soon. Middle School H-Wing, we've reconfigured a bunch of those up there, that's getting finished up right now, and the doors are being installed. One of the biggest things that we found out probably last October, November, is Middle School has not had an alarm system for almost two years now. We've done a lot of talking back and forth with contractors, we recently just signed, we went with a different contractor that I use with some of our city buildings, local, much easier to work with, way cheaper in the long run, and very responsive to our phone calls and everything that we have to do. So they will be installing the new panels next Tuesday up at the middle school. So before we open the school, we will have an alarm system working, and fire alarm will be actually working the way it's supposed to be instead of kind of on and off. We had to do some work in one of the gym offices, a little bit of reconfiguring. Our custodial office, we had one upstairs, we've gotten rid of that office, we're moving that downstairs. It's so our supervisor is downstairs on the main floor so that Marie can find him or anybody else he's in an eyeshot of where he's supposed to be, so we can take care of that. Again, the gym floor, if you wait another couple of days and swing on by, you'll see it pretty much coming together, they started putting the floor paint down today. The middle school facility storage building that was on hand probably a year and a half ago or so when it started, we found out wasn't really what we needed, and then I did a little bit of check-in and some recheck-in, and we were able to use one of my contractors from the city that we use on steel buildings, saved about $100,000 for the same building that will be installed by Irishpan. We should be starting digging that probably next week with the foundation and everything under it. We got a couple of doors over at Adult Learning to take care of, central office, we got a backflow that's being changed, and other than that, it's just all of the cleaning that we've done. We've pretty much stripped every room, cleaned floors, whether it's extracting carpets or doing the proper waxing on it. We're coming down to the wire here now, but I think we're going to be pretty good. So any questions at all?
Trying to make it not a long meeting and make it a school board question, but going back to those heat pumps from, that CMP was providing too much juice for, what was, what's the Amtra there, like what, what?
They were, what were we supposed to be? Two?
The transformer should be putting out 480 volts, give or take.
Give or take.
I think they say 500. Either direction. We were on 500.
Or 80.
We were 495 to 500, and then when they turned it, they actually took it up to almost 515 at one point. Luckily, our electricians were there and were monitoring it. We had disconnected the building at the time so that we could really watch it when they were turning it. We did have them check our other buildings at the same time, just to make sure, but that was the only one that we had had a bunch of different pumps and different units that we had had over the year or so. It wasn't like it was one after another, but you've got to remember, a lot of those pumps are anywhere between $500 and $3,000, so you only lose one or two before you start wondering how come, what's going on.
So besides making the heat pumps last longer, is there any, like, electricity cost savings of them fixing that?
There, there could be more, it's more the parts savings, because, you know, we shouldn't be changing a lot of those pump motors in some of those units up in the, up in the ceiling and up on the roof as often as they were. There's, there's been quite a few over the last few years, so I'm, I'm hoping that kind of knocks that down quite a bit on our heat wheels and everything else on those parts in there.
It was actually our HVAC contractor who caught that.
He found it, we, we were in there working and said, "This is ridiculous, we've got you up here every week for another something going on."
What did CMP say, anything?
If, we could have tried to push it to try to get a little bit back, but it wasn't just one pump, it was spread out throughout, so some of them were 10 years old, some of them were two years old, but we were at least happy to get the response from them, they jumped right on it for us and got it taken care of in a pretty timely manner, especially we, before we put the generator in, because I wasn't comfortable with having the generator and the transfer switch put in, if we were throwing too much power out, it would backfeed something and cause damage to a $300,000 generator, so.
Any other questions?
Can you, I just-
School Board Member Truman?
As I say, I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you so much for taking care of our buildings and getting them up to where they should have been.
We're getting there.
Getting there, I know, but thank you very much for, for all the work.
And I think you guys just got a snapshot of why I feel this collaboration is so good.
Fantastic, thank you. Anything else for superintendent's report? We're good, all right. Going on to item eight, chairs' report. I don't have anything to report this evening that is as fantastic as that. So we'll move on to item nine, staff reports, which I did not receive any updated staff reports. So we can go into item 10, board subcommittee meeting minutes. Item A, policy and personnel committing, committee meeting, our next meeting is, was this evening at 5:30. I'm sure you'll see another one popping up soon. Item B, finance and infrastructure committee meeting, our next meeting will be August 27th at 4:30 PM. Item C, curriculum committee meeting minutes, our next meeting will be August 25th at 4:30 PM. Any questions regarding the committee meeting minutes or meeting times? All right. Moving on to item 11, there is no old business, which we can then slide into item 12, which is new business. Item A, new hires, there is a memo in your packets, and do I have a motion for new hires this evening?
Chair Preble?
School Board Member Truman?
Before I make this motion, I just want to apologize for any butchering of last names. I've read through it and I'm like, there's a chance. I move we approve the nomination of Lindsay Pefenberger, Special Education Reading Specialist, Donna Powell, Pre-K to two, IEP Coordinator, Elizabeth Blanchard, K to two music teacher, Jonathan Lorenz, CK Burns STEM teacher, and Arianna LeClaire, first grade teacher at Young School, and issue a contract for the 2025-26 school year.
I have a motion by school board member Truman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by school board member Kidder. Any discussion on the motion for new hires? All righty, roll call vote. School Board Member Warnoff?
Yes.
School Board Member Richards?
Yes.
I vote yes. School Board Member Roach?
Yes.
School Board Member Kidder?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. There we go. All right. Moving on to item B for resignations, there is a memo in your packet, do I have a motion?
Chair Preble?
School Board Member Truman?
I move we accept the resignation of Catherine Alexandra Alexander, speech language pathologist, and Tina Nightingale, Young School Guidance Counselor, effective immediately.
I have a motion by school board member Truman, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, second by school board member Richards, if I heard right. Any discussion on the motion on the table? School Board Member Kidder?
Just as a parent whose oldest child has been extremely impacted by both of these individuals, but especially Ms. Alexander, I just want to thank them for everything they've offered to the students at Young because they've really made an incredible difference in my son's life.
All right. Beautiful. Any other questions, comments on the motion? All right. Moving into roll call vote, school board member Warnoff?
Yes.
School Board Member Richards?
Yes.
I vote yes. School Board Member Roach?
Yes.
School Board Member Kidder?
Regretfully yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. All right. Moving on to item C, annual letter. Superintendent Ray?
This is just an informational agenda item for you, as each year we submit a letter to the city council for the annual report, and I just wanted to provide you guys a copy of that letter.
Okay. Any questions on the letter for Superintendent Ray? All right. Moving on to the next item, thank you for that letter, by the way. Moving on to item D, which is building update. We already got a little bit of a taste of it, but take us away.
Yeah, so, I mean, that was the big news of the day, is that we've moved on to the next piece. One of the things that we will be working on next will be selection and advertising of owners' rep and clerk of the works, so that we have those in place as we begin to open bids and go through that piece. We also are working, and Meg, help me remember the name of the consulting company for the She can't remember it yet, but we are-
Competitive Energy Solutions?
Competitive Energy Solutions out of Portland, and this is the group that specializes in the tax rebate piece that we've worked so very hard on. This is actually looking like, based off the initial work that they're doing, that this could be, we were planning on hopefully 1 million, and I think we're thinking that it could possibly be much larger than that. But still, you know, don't want to throw false things out there and have people remember those, but we're trying to maximize that as much as possible as we start thinking about the next milestones of going out to bid, which will be next week, and then the reading of the bid and opening of those very shortly after that, we will be working on making sure that we have that ribbon cutting in place so that we can get to work.
All right. Any questions for Superintendent Ray?
Quick question, what are the roles of the owners' rep and the clerk of the works?
Okay. So the owners' rep, and I sometimes get this confused, does a lot of the commissioning work for the buildings, there are representatives of dealing with as- There are representatives of dealing with as a conduit between the architect, the builders, and the DOE as such an important part, because again, it's not only local money, but state money that's involved, so they handle that piece. Your Clerk of the Works are going to be the people who's on the job site every single day, running reports for us, taking a lot of pictures around the installation. We will actually in this project have a Clerk of the Works and an assistant. And the reason for that is you have two massive projects at the same time. These need to be individuals who are willing to shut down the construction that day when they see something that doesn't seem right, or if they see a substandard product, or if we see that, I'm just thinking of examples, let's say our foundation's down and we're seeing a lot of cracking immediately. Those are really the eyes and the ears on the site all the time that knows when to stop, knows when to call, you know, so that when, when they say, Dawn, Jeremy, Meg, Oak Point, get over here, that means that they're hopefully stopping a problem so that we're not dealing with something in three years from now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to item E, Title Funds Update. Superintendent Ray?
Yeah, so Meg put this together, and this is really just informational at this point, showing how much funds we are getting or are planning to get based off title funds in the upcoming year.
School Board Member Roach?
You say at the end of the memo that you're dependent on the non-publics to get their application in. Number one, is TA fully aware of this? This was, memo is August seventh, and what happens if they don't participate or fill out the application?
Yeah, so Meg is in constant communication with the non-publics and has given deadlines to get those things in. Basically, if things don't get done, it holds up our ability to get the grants processed.
Any other questions? Alright, moving on to item F, Enrollment Update. Superintendent Ray?
Yeah, so as you know, we've had the Welcome Center, which has been, was a big part for us the last couple of years. And we continue to look and watch our enrollments. And when you think about our enrollments right now, where we're at, we're at about nineteen twenty-three, which is about where we've been the last couple of years. It's not a big spike or anything. We have seen a decrease in the number of M L students based off the hotel closing. Seems like a majority of those students are moving to a community that I also serve in as superintendent, so those families are still with us. But I, while we're seeing a few new ones, we're also seeing a lot of kids exit out, so I don't think we're going to see nearly the number of students next year. What that will mean for us is we did have a couple of positions that were in our budget for E, for E L, EdTechs that we've kind of hit a pause on right now, had not hired. We'll have a conversation as we know. Every fall throws us a curve ball in one way or the other, and our principals may come to us and say, ooh, this situation has just happened. And we may come to you asking to reallocate some staff around once we see what the new population and, you know, level of students are. I haven't heard from principals that were really worried about any class sizes anywhere right now. We certainly, our biggest concern is always burn school because there's really not another place to put another classroom. We've been monitoring our superintendent's agreements, and certainly in situations where we can take a student, we do. When they're asking for something that's three through five, we typically just say no right out of the gate because there's just not enough space in that, in that building. So enrollment wise, I'm thinking we're probably going to be fairly flat compared to the year before.
Any questions? On enrollment? School Board Member Roach?
Sorry, not to put you on the spot for math, but the total of the hotel asylum kids was over a hundred last year, and you say it's a thirty-five to thirty-nine percent drop, but there's only a handful left in the hotel. So are you saying that the thirty-five, thirty-nine percent drop is a drop overall, but those kids found homes in Saco?
Some did, some did not. Early indications were there was going to be very limited housing in Saco. In the last conversation we had with Chris, we were seeing some sixteen, I think. But not a lot. But we've also had some newer, new housing developments which have brought some kids, so I think we're going to see a drop in E L L students. I think we're going to see a slight increase in students residence-wise through the city there, and I suspect that when it comes to, we're going to be right in the ballpark of ten or twenty students from where we were the year before.
And we're going to count whoever's in the hotel for this school year, even though the program, to be fair to them, the program ends September thirtieth when school already starts, so we're gonna, we're gonna include them. Okay, good.
Alright, any other questions for Superintendent Ray? Okay, moving on to item G, Cohort Two, Child Developmental Services to Saco Schools, Special Services. Superintendent Ray?
Okay, so as we know, four-year-olds in the transition of C D S services to the public schools, excuse me, something the state has been working on and something that Jessica and her staff has been very enthusiastic about taking on here in the schools. We did not go in Cohort One. I think there was too many questions for us. This winter, spring, Jess felt like the team was ready and that some of those questions were being answered. Certainly, space always is an issue, and we have entered the Cohort Two piece where we will be serving those students. We received our allocation from the state, which is at approximately six hundred thousand dollars for the year, give or take. Now is the piece, that we worked through that piece and that allocation and say, okay, here are our costs. But one of the, you know, big pieces is that we have a very complex special education department as it is, and to take on, you know, another possibly sixty-plus students is a big ask for the department. And we wanted to think about where we were as a school at pre-K, where our staff was, the work that we had on our plate coming forward, and the funds that were available. And we've outlined that we'd like to recommend some staffing changes. As you know, Jemay has been working as a teacher and as a program director in that building for the last several years. And now there's going to be another big influx of students that need to be served, I E Ps monitored, assignments made for services. And we felt that for that building and consistency, we wanted to recommend that Jemay, Jemay step back from the teaching responsibilities and serve as that site director and program coordinator for the case manager for those students, which would put her more full-time administration available for whatever's coming up throughout the day, and that we would hire a part-time teaching position to replace her. Essentially, no cost in the local budget because we'd be using the funds that has built-in administrative and other pieces into it to support that salary piece. Because this is going to be a lot. And I think that having somebody site-based is really important for us. Additionally, as we think about it, one of the other pieces, as we see more students coming on to the roles here, is just thinking about how are we going to serve all these kids? We're probably going to have to start thinking over the next couple of years prior to getting into the new school space. Like, we're pretty good over there, but, you know, you could have a lot of call for services, so where does that? And we're a pretty big, successful special education department that it's not probably reasonable to think that the existing staff could totally manage another sixty to seventy I E Ps. Additionally, three-year-olds are part of the process, and we hope to bring that on board and take on those services a little bit quicker than maybe the state has granted permission for now. But then there's now a hundred and something kids that will be monitoring their plans. And so as we put this forward to you guys, this is our recommendation. Jemay does a great job. We have all the confidence in the world of her. And not only will it help with the C D S work, but I think it will just make for a better functioning of the building over there, so she's not pulled in so many different directions.
Do you need a motion from us?
I would like to have that. I'd like to signal our support to do that because it's a change.
Oh, a hundred percent. I was just-
The way that we did things and just really would like to have the feeling of the board.
Can I also ask, do we have to make the motion first before I ask questions, or? It has more to do with like facilities and that sort of thing.
I think you, I'm happy to answer that question. Yeah.
So like, granted, we're moving into a new building in three years. Do we need to modify? I mean, I know it's like too late for that probably, but like-
No, we've planned for enough space in that.
Okay.
I think that as we begin to open that building and think about the services that we're taking on now, do I fully believe that, I believe Meg, it's eleven spaces that we have in that building, correct? Eleven classrooms? Do I really think that? Do I think that all families will access pre-K services? No. Because some of them are probably have younger kids in, in a daycare as well, and you want to keep your kids together, or you have a really good situation, or, or whatever. But I do think that as we explore the three-year-old programming, that will be a transition as we'll have to think about space and how much we take on, and, and is that going to be the appropriate space for that? Some of that's not all-day programming. Some of that's just going to be receiving therapies or other pieces that may, that may occur in that building. But I think that this is going to be a lot of work in coordinating those efforts. I think it's the right thing to do. It's where we want to be as a community, and we need someone other than the department running point on those pieces because it's just going to be so much.
If the, so for the three-year-olds, it won't be like they're going to be a whole, there's going to be a whole classroom. It's just-
Correct.
Smaller services that are going to be offered, so potentially could just use one classroom to offer those services. Is that what you're thinking, or? I mean, maybe more classrooms than that, but-
I think we have a lot to learn first.
Okay.
Before we, you know, get too far out of the seats, but I see it as offering, it could be a place for speech, it could be a place for O T, it could be those types of things.
I was just trying to get, wrap it around, wrap my head around it. Like, how is this, how is this going to look? If we needed more classrooms, or, or what you were-
I think we're going to be good right now.
Okay. I'm already like-
Sometimes you don't know what you don't know.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
How do I make the motion? I don't know. I would like to move, we approve the I E P facilitation and L E A role. Is that what it is?
Well, why don't we go down to-
Oh, sorry. I read that wrong. I read that wrong.
Why don't we just-
Item H.
Yeah, let's make the motion on item H.
So moving on to item H, Appointment of Pre-K Special Services Site Administrator.
Sorry, I jumped the gun on that one.
That's okay. Superintendent Ray, any other further explanation on item H?
I think, I think we have it. I can entertain questions.
Any quick questions? Oh. Super, uh, Warnoff, Carolyn Warnoff.
You said, thank you. You said state funding will be provided for the transition. Is that, what does that mean specifically?
So they're run, when I say transition, the plan is that this will sit outside of the EPS formula, okay? And that they will be funding, think of it a little bit like title funds in a way that you have your regular school budget, and we just talked about how we get Title One funds. This will be a fund that separates by themselves, that supports these services only. We actually really worked hard and advocated it for that way, because if you think about across the state, what we didn't want to see have happen is these funds go into EPS, and then a board, and anywhere in the state, this wasn't about us. We were kind of think about, say, where a community, let's say, had a capital emergency, and that a board was forced to make a decision around their budget where they might take from this pot of money to fix something. These are for services that need to go to our three- and four-year-olds, and the amount of money could, could change each year based off the number of kiddos they're projecting that you serve. It's, you know, they give us the number of kiddos, they have a weight, they have a, a dollar amount. And this year it's about six hundred. So those funds will be supported from that pocket of money to add the additional time to Jemay, where our regular budget would support the salary of the teacher portion of her day.
Any, oh, School Board Member Kidder?
You can absolutely tell me that this is a question for much future, the date in much in the future. But I'm just, the four-year-olds makes total sense to me because they're already in pre-K. But I know that some three-year-olds through their I E Ps are recommended to be placed in pre-Ks before they reach four years old. Like, my son was one of them, but COVID kind of ruined that. And so I just don't know how, how will that be managed? And you can again tell me that that is a problem for another date, but-
I'll take you up on that piece that, that's a piece that we'd have to think about, because obviously, space will dictate a lot of things. And then we'll be in one situation where we are today and a different situation when we move to the, to the new school. I think we have to have consistency of funding that's going to occur. I kind of believe that when schools step up to the plate and deliver these services, that we'll see more kids coming our way. I hope that happens because we know that early intervention is the best scenario, which could, and I'm talking way down the road, really make a different allocation of what we have throughout our district, of where we spend our money and which services we provide. I mean, certainly, if we were able to work with families on speech-related issues as three- and four-year-olds, whereas now they may not be getting service at all, that may change our allocation throughout the district in ten years. So I think we'll probably have to be very, we'll have to be learners, we'll have to be flexible, and we probably will have to come up with some, you know, strange solutions as this goes. You know, the other piece I'm going to say is that if you do this really well, you're going to have people wanting to be in your community. And so I don't know how we will handle that issue, and been asked that question before. I've been asked that question before, and we'll have to get back, I'll just have to talk it over and see what that's all about.
Fair enough. Thank you.
School board member Roach.
All right. Just one example. You mentioned OT, and that's occupational therapy. Okay. Therapist. So, assuming you have the space, assuming the funding's consistent, what about that person that is doing that? So, if the, if the number of kids is high, is that type of position easily filled? How many OTs do we have in the district right now? Three?
And again, I think as you look at what may be needed as you ramp up, maybe, well, let's hope, is very different than what you might need after 10 years of doing that program. I mean, I think the thought is, early intervention, and there would be theoretically a shift in services to the younger age. That's what you would be hoping for.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion?
I'll take a second stab at this, now that I've actually read this part. I like to jump the gun sometimes. I would like to move, we, I move, we approve the assignment of the pre-K special services site administrator to Jemay Walker.
I have a motion on the table by school board member Truman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by school board member Kitter. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing no one seeking discussion, school board member Warnock.
Yes.
School board member Richards.
Yes.
I vote yes. School board member Roach.
Yes.
School board member Kitter.
Yes.
School board member Truman.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. All right. Moving on to item I, literacy pilot update. Superintendent Ray?
I'm going to hand that one to Assistant Superintendent Parkhurst.
All right.
Thank you. So, this is information that I think we've kind of kept the board along the way, but tonight, just want to kind of formally announce what the pilot structure will look like, based on our review of ELA curriculum across this school year. The team that reviewed curriculums really felt like there were certainly a lot of moving parts, and weren't quite ready to make a commitment to one curricular adoption until we really have a boots-on-the-ground feeling about how that looks with our students. Some of the complexity around that was the fact that our kind of top priority program that we looked at as a resource is Amplify CKLA, which includes a phonics component and a knowledge-based component. And then, the fact that our pre-K uses the main state curriculum, pre-K for me, and planning forward with the fact that there is a K for me and a first-for-me curriculum through the state, and that our pre-K and K will be together, though the K for me and pre-K for me programs do not include a phonics or phonemic awareness component. So, the team really wanted to make sure that we were trying out CKLA at the K all the way up through fifth-grade level, as well as our kindergarten and first-grade teachers having two teachers per grade level try out the K for me and first-for-me programs, so that we can make a better decision as we approach budget season for next school year about what a full adoption would look like, with a little bit more confidence than the team could recommend for this year. So, the pilot will look like two teachers at each grade level, both in Amplify CKLA, and then K for me and first-for-me, with the exception of second grade, which will have two pilot teachers at Young and two at Fairfield. The reasoning for that is, we like to be able to have the teams of teachers working together to collaborate on that pilot. We did not double up in K and one, because we had two different programs that we were looking at, so we didn't want to have too many teachers piloting something in entirety. There will be professional development associated with each of those. We already had some teachers attend some trainings around K for me and first-for-me. We will also have an opportunity for our pilot teachers to share with those teachers who aren't piloting, for our non-pilot teachers to engage in the training around both of those, if they would like to on an optional basis, and an ability for them to observe their peers that are piloting. And lastly, we'll be continuing some of the same assessments that we use in our non-pilot classrooms, so that we can kind of compare apples to apples in terms of the classrooms using different resources as we move forward and make that decision. I will kind of be clear that for our second to fifth-grade students, we're really only piloting one, so it's kind of like looking through the fall to see if we really feel like we want to move forward with this. And if not, we would be looking to kind of pivot and off-ramp to decide what that means for the future of the curriculum for those grade levels, but that was really the highly rated, highest-rated resource for those grades, and our teachers are pretty excited about that. The funding for the piloting implementation utilized, utilized existing grant funds that we had through title allocations for professional development in FY '25, which we can expend through the end of September. And then, we were also able to kind of utilize some of our Title I resources at Fairfield and CK Burns in order to make those purchases. And other good news in the funding department is that if we do decide to move forward with this, the pilot kind of buys us those teachers forward, and then, we could make a longer-term commitment, but we would have already invested in the classrooms that had piloted, so it gives us a little bit more of an on-ramp towards that funding as we plan for the next fiscal year.
All right. Any questions for Meg? All right. I guess no one's seeking questions. Thank you. Moving on to item J, which is Catholic Charities Grant. Superintendent Ray?
So, this spring, we were really thinking that the grant for the Welcome Center and Catholic Charities money was going away. However, the money did come through at $163,000, so we're going to be able to keep the Welcome Center open for another year, which is just a pretty remarkable resource for our new arrivals, for students who are dealing with homelessness, et cetera. Want to thank Catholic Charities, who reached out to us, and, you know, a couple of years ago, was able to help us secure this funding. It goes a long ways in making a difference, and, you know, a registration for a newcomer could, three to four hours, maybe, sometimes, that is time that is tough in the middle of the school year for a principal, or secretary, or someone on staff to pull away from serving current students. And so, we're just pretty, we're just pretty excited that we're able to keep our program running and, you know, have another year of it.
Fantastic. Any other questions for Superintendent Ray? School board member Roach?
Questions, the comment, I'll use my soapbox. So, the federal government, with no moral compass, cut off this funding after assignments that were granted, and they can't go to work the first six months. And yet, you know, Catholic by name, not by religion, but just, it's by charities, came through for us. Is that what you're telling me?
Meg, that, that money does run some through the federal government, but Kevin, it, I think it's still probably because it was allocated during a different budget year for federal, that we will have it, and I think we may be really talking about this next spring, of whether we can continue those. They were probably more of a grant recipient.
But you know the spirit of that executive order. Okay. All right. I'll end the soapbox. Thank you.
Any other question for Superintendent Ray? Okay. Moving on to item 13, other information. I was not made aware of any other information we should be aware of? Anybody? Triple-checking. All right. Moving on to item 14, executive session. Labor contract negotiations pursuant to M1 MSRA 4056D. Do I have a motion?
Chair Purple?
School board member Truman?
I move, we enter into executive session for labor contract negotiations pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056D.
Any second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by school board member Kitter. Any discussion before going into executive session? Just asking. All right. Roll call, vote. School board member Warnock?
Yes.
School board member Richards?
Yes.
School, I vote yes. Woo-hoo. School board member Roach?
Yes.
School board member Kitter?
Yes.
School board member Truman?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero to enter executive session at, ooh, eight o'clock on the nose. All right. And I believe we will be meeting in the conference room downstairs. Perfect.
And coming...
And coming back. And coming back.